I'll call to order the work session, the Willsville City Council of April 7th, 2025 at 6:30 PM. We'll start by asking council members to review the amended agenda and items on consent. Are there any comments? Seeing none, are there any council concerns before we start the work session? Okay, we'll move to the only item on the pre-council work session agenda, Tourism Development Strategy.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Zoe Monburt. I'm the Assistant to the City Manager at the city and the staff liaison to the Tourism Promotion Committee. And with me this evening are Matthew Landkampfer and Greg Netzer of Whereabout. They are the consultant for our new Tourism Development Strategy. This evening, the Whereabout team will provide a high-level presentation describing the Tourism Development Strategy that the Tourism Development Promotion Committee unanimously recommended to the City Council for adoption at their March 19 meeting. So with that, I will hand it over to Matthew and Greg.
Good evening. Thank you, Zoe. We're going to walk you through a very high-level presentation. I know the entire document was in your packet. It's 144 short pages. Most of that is an appendix, which was our original report, our findings from the first phase of this work. But there is still a significant number of pages covering the strategic part of it. And we're going to give you a high-level overview, knowing that you have the full document. Greg's going to start with a couple of pieces, and then I'll take it from there.
Good evening. The first piece that we want to make sure we're calling our attention to in this plan is a bit of a North Star for this entire project. It's a vision, it's a long-form vision statement. Here, in this particular slide, we just have the highlight piece I'd like to read. "In 2035, Wilsonville is a city alive with a vibrant sense of community, culture, and heritage. Residents and visitors experience a city that is the model of an elevated regional culture, a welcoming, vital city that pays homage to its past and celebrates its future." The rest of this long-form statement paints a picture of a Wilsonville in 2035 that we believe, and the entire committee believed, was an aspirational future that it wanted to try to achieve. Much of the description that is part of this long-term vision are actually elements from our planning committee as we were thinking about what are the things in a city that we want to see in the future that we think are exciting and valuable and magnetic? What would some of those things be? What would they look like? So we pulled all of that together in this long-form statement that all rolls up to this piece that I just read. The important thing is, for the rest of this plan, though, what it does is it sets out this possibility, this aspirational future, that the rest of the strategies that the planning team addressed actually lead directly toward. And I think that's all I need to say about that. There we go. Oh, I can just look over in this one. The plan itself, like any plan, is an organizing principle, and this one is nine different sections. These are the nine major areas that our planning team felt described the most critical needs that the city needed to address over these coming 10 years if it was to achieve that aspirational future. Each one of these has its own set of specific activities and strategies, as well as a specific set of indicators to measure whether success and impact is following on the work that we're doing in pursuit of them. But I would like to read the nine, the nine larger buckets, these objectives. Pardon me. First, build destination management capacity and connections. Generally, as the city grows, as the marketing of the city, as the destination grows, at some point, it will outgrow the ability of the current people trying to manage that activity. This is really meant to keep an eye on that, to say that at some point, we need to make sure that we're making an allowance for someone to properly market and communicate around the vision and what the future can be here and why we want people to come. Number two, accelerate sports and outdoor recreation. Everywhere we looked, every person we talked to had something to say around tying the proximity of Wilsonville to outdoor recreation and to sporting activity, that it clearly shows a possible future for even driving even more activity. Number three was nurture and attract impactful events. Identifying unique events are to a city some of its most important marketing tools, honestly. Not only are they providing activity and culture for the residents of the city, they act as a magnet to bring people to visit you as well. Putting some real thought and rigor into thinking about what kind of activities do we want to focus here for events, and what might we even build that's unique to us could be significant drivers of visitation in the future. Number four is enhance and elevate Willamette River access. Again, this came up routinely as a way to tie into number two to some degree, but also to tie into the wealth of parks that you have here in the region. There's so much activity in and around the river that could actually tie to a number of the objectives here that it made, I hate to keep saying it made a lot of sense, but it did make a lot of sense. Number five, invest in town center development. When we looked, all of these elements of this long-term vision really revolve around the ability of the town to draw people to its center. And we know that there is a longstanding town center development plan that's in various stages of activity right now. For the success of the long-term destination vision, investing in that town center development would be an unbelievable bonus to driving visitation in the city. Number six is focusing on access and transportation. As the city grows, as visitation grows, as hopefully more people are here to enjoy those things, transportation will become more and more difficult, even in a city like Wilsonville that is built around the automobile in many ways. But finding not only easier ways to get around, but more publicly available ways to get around will help keep congestion down. It will help more people move, and it will help them get very specifically from even hotel-to-market to restaurant, for example. Number seven, support the growth of our arts and culture ecosystem. This is something that we see in the destinations we work with around the U.S. That healthy, vibrant arts and culture ecosystem is one of the most important and impactful drivers of visitation to any city. Knowing that there is a foundation to build on here, especially around public art, publicly available art, public 3D art, as we sometimes will call it, felt like this is something that was a terrific enhancement for the city itself, as well as, well, I mean, sort of a bit of a calling card, I would say. Number eight, highlight food and beverage. Part of our work here, actually eight and nine, highlight food and beverage and diversify and expand lodging options. Part of our work here was to spend several days in the city acting as though we were tourists. And that experience, coupled with our interactions with hoteliers, with restaurateurs, with people from different beverage businesses, made it clear to us that a growth in variety and option, especially in more boutique or unique spaces that people visiting Wilsonville can't necessarily find anywhere else in the town, we're going to make the city very, very attractive and engaging to people who come to visit here. It's why they will stay even longer if they have lovely, unique places that they can't find anywhere else to stay and to spend their very hard-earned dollars enjoying themselves.
So those nine objectives organize all the strategies of the plan in one way, around those nine big ideas. But we've also organized the strategies of the plan into three stages. And this is more taking it from that idea of what are the things we need to solve for, and now into how do we implement this thing? So we have three phases, as you see here in the page numbers from the full report are called out. The first phase covers the first four years of the planning timeframe. There are 16 strategies there. And we really see those as the catalytic strategies. So these aren't ordered in terms of what we think is ultimately most important for Wilsonville, but more in terms of some things need to happen first, some things are prerequisite for other things, prerequisites for other things. And so there was some logic as to what went into that stage one that's more about what's catalytic and can cause other things to be more easily done. The second stage, supporting growth, years five through seven, 13 strategies. And finally, the reaping rewards stage covers the last years of the plan with 10 strategies. So you can see that the plan is slightly front-loaded. Some of those things, though, that start in stage one will continue into the years of stage two. They may take longer, especially when you think of things like city center actions, those sorts of things that happen on a long timeframe. So some of these things will take multiple, or many years to accomplish. And finally, just a little bit about what happens next with implementation. There's a couple of pages, or maybe three pages on this at the back of the strategy part of the plan, page 46. But really, the first four things, identify a core tourism development strategy implementation team. And this is a group of city staff and also some key stakeholders that will meet on a regular basis to keep this thing moving. I think it's really important that this is a community plan, and it's not entirely on the shoulders of the city to execute. While the city is the organizer and the convener for this, definitely getting the help of those partners will be really important. Some of those potential partners are listed on the right. Those are included in the plan, but just for your reference here. That core tourism development strategy implementation team would have a subset of those, probably just a few of them. And that would guide the implementation of the plan. We would also need to identify ad hoc strategy teams for specific strategies that are in stage one. So we pull together a small group of people to work on those. They'd meet at their own cadence and report back to that bigger team. We also need to gather data to set baselines for all the measurable indicators. We want to track those over the 10 years. And so some of the early work is to set what's it at now, whether it's a social media measurement or an economic impact measurement. Document those so that we're ready to track those over time, so that hopefully we can see all of them go in the right direction. And finally, to integrate near-term strategies into the five-year action plan and annual one-year implementation plan. And that's a document that you see on an annual basis. And that is really where the rubber hits the road for a 10-year plan like this, is the things that are up next will go into that plan that Zoe and her colleagues will share with you on an annual basis. So with that, I think we will go to questions.
Thank you. Would you put the slide back up with the nine objectives?
Absolutely.
Thank you. I enjoyed reading all of the packet. There was a lot of information there. It was very, very well done. And I kept thinking, oh, I'd like to visit there. And then I realized, oh, I live here. But it just really makes where you live sound so exciting and so vibrant. Now, of course, this is a timeline and, you know, there are objectives and all of that. But I was particularly interested in number two, the sports and outdoor recreation. As you've mentioned, we live in such a prime spot. And I like the idea of finding some vendor perhaps to have kayaks and canoes or whatever along the river. That way, we wouldn't have to run it as a city, but it could just be someone like they do over at Cook's Park here, that they just bring their canoes and kayaks over and get people out and started along the Tuollets. And so we could do that here, and that'd be wonderful. I also like the idea of the possible sports venue. I know that's been talked about off and on. But I think it, number two, really, really interested me. And number five, I mean, it's obvious that if we don't have a town center to attract people here, then it's really a downfall as far as our tourism. We think often, I know many citizens that I speak to often just think about how would they use the town center, someone that already lives here. And that's an important part of the puzzle. But it's also a very important part of the puzzle when we're attracting people to our city, that they know that they have lodging, that may be boutique, may be just the Holiday Inn or the Hilton, but also that they have a way to get to a vibrant town center where they can enjoy the meals and the shopping, et cetera. So that was an important one to have as well. So thank you very much. I found it very interesting. I'm glad I live here.
Yeah, my quick comment and just a little bit of feedback. The blue sky and the potential and the aspirational element of it, I understand that that's a really important part of what you do when you build out a plan like this. I also believe it's important that if we can't measure it, we're really not able to measure and be able to report on whether anything that we're doing is successful. So just for visibility to the rest of council, I did have a really good call today with Zoe, and we discussed, and I think she shared with, she'll be sharing with some others, some of the data points that we really need to have a comprehensive report of where we're at now and where we're going so that we can really see what the performance is, particularly on the marketing side, because that's where I can kind of geek out, and really making sure that we have comprehensive reporting so that we can actually see. So Zoe, I know you're happy to share that with other members of council, and I appreciate your feedback and allowing me to kind of give you my perspective today. So thank you.
Yeah, so the one thing that I was going to mention, I know that the last time that we saw you all, it was before our council retreat. And so looking at stage one, 1.1, it says collaborate with Parks and Recreation Department to implement elements of Boone's Ferry and Memorial Park master plans related to river access. One of the things that we came away with from that council goal setting was that we were looking to maintain our parks for the next two years of the length of that, the goals that we set. And that, to me, kind of speaks to what would look like an expansion of parks and what they're offering, which kind of goes, kind of goes against the goals that we had kind of laid out in that goal-setting meeting. That's really the only thing that I, I just saw that, and I flagged that, and went, you know, as we're looking at taking on 30 more acres of Parks and Rec, maintain space, and we're looking at figuring out some things as we go forward with, you know, some of the other things that you mentioned on here, I just wonder how everyone else may feel about that being included in this plan.
Actually, that caught my attention, too, because one of the things that I spoke to Zoe about today was implementation makes it sound as if we're a little further along in the process than we really are. So I know we talked about possibly looking at the nomenclature on that a bit and massaging that to really make it more aspirational, as opposed to implementation, because I agree, that caught me right when I first read it. And because I don't think we're there yet. We're not at the implementation phase.
Meaning the Parks and Recs department is not at the stage where they're ready to implement those plans?
Regarding the river, yeah. Regarding the river. I mean, one of the things Zoe and I talked about today is the work has to continue so that it doesn't fall off the radar, right?
Absolutely.
Because it is, it is part of our future. But the work does continue, but it's really not taking it to the actual implementation phase. So if you were to look at this from a project management perspective, implementation is a little bit further along. So
Absolutely.
So I think that there needs to just be some conversation on clarification of that.
So your nomenclature comment makes sense to me now, if you said that, because it's like the implementation of this plan as opposed to implementation of, right. So it's, those get conflated pretty easily, I would think. So that makes sense. That feels like a relatively straightforward fix.
I really appreciate the report and presentation. I do agree that we're looking long-term as opposed to immediate. Right now, the nation and locally, let alone statewide, we have to take into account a lot of the stuff that's out of our control. So, but thank you for your efforts, and I appreciate it.
Mayor, this is on consent. So to avoid pulling it, you could just give direction to staff. You could tell them to fix it, and we will fix the language according to what we just heard, if that's amenable to council, instead of pulling it from the consent agenda.
Yeah, let's go ahead and fix it. I agree.
Just that one strategy related to the Parks and Recreation?
What we're approving on consent tonight is different than what the data points that I'm talking about. That's more at the report level. That's not actually, that's on report of current performance.
Right, but the word implement. So for strategy 1.1, if you do want that word to change, that's what City Manager Cosgrove is mentioning, since it is on consent, if you want the word changed, we just need to know what you want it to say, and we can make that revision in the plan. So it would be adopt-
We understand what it is they're saying. We can come up with a word.
Okay.
Is that a word we can adjust in time for the, to raise it again?
We can wordsmith if you want. We have eight minutes. So if there's a word that you feel comfortable with, or if you just trust staff to just come up with a word, we're happy. Do you have a word?
I don't have the whole phrase in front of me, but it seems to me it could be support the Parks and Recreation Department in-
Planning for-
Activating their plans.
Right, for planning for access to the Willamette River. Something to that effect.
Something to that effect.
Comfortable with that?
I'm comfortable with that as well.
Yeah, I mean, terms like explore, collaborate.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. I'm good.
Good.
With that, thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you.
And we return until 7:00 PM.
Thank you.
Anyway, unfortunately, I have to start the meeting with some difficult news. I'd like to take a moment to reflect on the recent tragic loss of one of our community members, Darcie Olivier. She was killed in a car accident last week. Darcie leaves behind her husband and their very young daughter. Many of us remember seeing Darcie and her daughter at the Wilsonville Library during storytime, where they were familiar faces. In support of Darcie's family during this difficult time, our husband's employer, Stafford Beverage, here in Wilsonville, has set up a GoFund account. You can find the link on the local social media pages, and I'll provide this information in my written materials to the City Recorder at the conclusion of this meeting. As a parent and as your mayor, as a fellow community member, I would ask that you keep Darcie's family in your thoughts and prayers during this difficult time. Next, I want to bring your attention to the ongoing efforts of looking for our fellow resident, Catherine Gerke. I believe I am pronouncing it correctly. Our Wilsonville Police Department, the Clackamas County Search and Rescue, and the Clackamas County Sheriff's Office have been attempting to locate her. She's 64 years old. She's been missing since March 26, 2025. She was last seen walking in the Villa Bar area. There's more detailed information concerning her description, both in Wilsonville spokesman and on the sheriff's page. So I'll ask you to read that. Clackamas County Search and Rescue has been actively searching for her, using aerial drones, and are -- I know that with talking with Chief Wurps and his team, along with the Clackamas County Sheriff's Office, they are trying to locate her. So I thank them for their efforts. Another event, you may be aware, it was reported recently in the media, that longtime resident, State Senator Aaron Woods, is undergoing medical treatment. Late last week, Senate President Rob Wagner gave Senator Woods medical leave from his post on the Senate Labor and Business Committee, the Joint Committee on Ways and Means, and its subcommittee on Transportation and Economic Development. I chatted with Senator Woods just before the media announcement confirming this. He was in very good spirits. I've known Senator Woods for a long time. He has lived in Wilsonville for over 27 years. He is a treasured member of our community, who has devoted a lot of his time in making our community a better place to live. I would ask that you keep him and his family in your thoughts and prayers of healing and comfort for our senator. Then most recently, I want to discuss the recent turbulence in the financial markets in the United States and abroad. Along with the threat of rising prices at home, this has undoubtedly affected many of us here. I want to assure you, as your mayor, and that the city council and staff are aware of this, especially considering that 38% of Wilsonville households are already cost burden, paying more than one-third of their income on housing, and 19% are severely cost burden, paying more than half of their income on housing. And that was before the disruption that's occurring now. We understand that economic uncertainties can be stressful, it's moments like these that our community's strength truly shines. Let us focus on the values that bind us together: compassion, cooperation, belonging, and mutual respect and support. By working together at the local level, we can weather this like we've done it in the past. I encourage everyone to stay informed, support local small businesses, new and old, and our local nonprofits, especially Wilsonville Community Sharing, Heart of the City, and Wilsonville Community Seniors, Inc. And let's look out for one another. Now turning to some brighter news, I want to thank Wilsonville Police Department. I extend my gratitude to them for their efforts in conjunction with the Clackamas County Sheriff's Office for their outstanding efforts during the recent retail crime mission on April 3, which resulted in over 19 arrests. Their dedication and hard work in cracking down on theft that impacts our local businesses is very much appreciated. I extend my thanks to that leadership of Chief Wurps and all his team. They make our community a safe and vibrant place, and they also really help our local businesses. Thank you, Chief Wurps, and I think he deserves it. Turning to the Mayor's Business Report, I have several items to report on since our last city council meeting on March 17. I would like to acknowledge during the month of April, we celebrate Death Heritage Month, which raises awareness of the contributions and accomplishments of the deaf community and advocates for a more accessible world for those who are hearing impaired. Two quotes resonate with me. The first is from renowned actress Marlee Matlin, who's deaf. She said, "I hope I inspire people to hear," excuse me, "I hope I inspire people who hear. Hearing people have the ability to remove barriers that prevent deaf people from achieving their dreams." The next is from Helen Keller. "Every one of us is blind and deaf. Until our eyes are open to our fellow men, until our ears hear the voice of humanity." We also commemorate Arab-American Heritage Month to celebrate the history, diverse backgrounds, rich traditions, and many contributions of Arab-Americans to the United States and our community. And later on, Councilor Dunwell will discuss this, but I had the opportunity to briefly attend. The city's Arts, Culture, and Heritage Commission hosted the first multicultural dance celebration, and it was a huge success, and Councilor Dunwell will give her thoughts on that. Turning to proclamations, one of my favorite parts of the meeting. In the city council meeting packet for night's meeting, there are a few proclamations we'd like to call attention to. First, we have a proclamation declaring April as Child Abuse Awareness Month. The proclamation specifically declares that by providing a healthy environment for our children, free of violence, abuse, and neglect, we can help ensure that Wilsonville's children will grow to their full potential. We also have a proclamation for April as Volunteer Appreciation Month. The city greatly appreciates the contributions that volunteers make to our community. We acknowledge and thank our volunteers for their service to the city and the community. I see a lot of them here tonight. The city will host a volunteer appreciation event on May 1 at Wilsonville High School's Performing Arts Center. We couldn't get any time for April, so we cheated by a couple of days, I guess. But we look forward to seeing all our volunteers there. And lastly, we have an Arbor Day proclamation honoring April as Arbor Month in the state of Oregon. Every year in our Arbor Day proclamation, Wilsonville recognizes the important role trees play in the sense of place and quality of life for our community. We encourage our residents and businesses to plant trees for this in future generations. The city of Wilsonville has had the honor of being recognized as a Tree City, excuse me, a Tree City USA by the National Arbor Day Foundation for over 27 years. Nominated by Wilsonville resident Odessa Archival, the Leyland Cypress, which is located at the intersection of Wilsonville Road and Boone's Ferry Road, most likely planted after intersection improvements in the early 2000s, the approximately 25-year-old tree is well-manicured and maintained by the Public Works Department. We're recognizing this year that addition of a new heritage tree, this tree, for our community. The prominent location, unique shape, and relationship to Wilsonville's holiday season make it a tree that's a standout for the community and a part of this Arbor Day proclamation. Turning to legislative testimony, and for that, I am going to let you know, there was a lot of written testimony by myself with the help of city staff and our community members. It's all in my written submissions, and they're available to the court reporter if you wish to go through and read them all. It says, I am not going to read them all tonight because my voice is, you don't want to hear it, and my voice is not going to make it through the meeting. But this is the most historic legislative session with a ton of bills that I've ever seen in a long time. Over the past month, on meetings, I've participated in a number of meetings. This includes the Clackamas County Coordinating Committee, Metro Subcommittee, members elected Lake Oswego Mayor Joe Buck to the city's co-chair of the Subcommittee, along with Clackamas, excuse me, along with Clackamas County Commissioner Paul Savas. I also attended two forums, one connected by Greater Portland, Inc. on March 20, and another by the Clackamas County Business Alliance on March 31. These events brought together regional mayors, business leaders, and economic development partners for candid discussions on the opportunities and challenges facing our communities. I highlighted our city council goals, Wilsonville's historical economic vitality, and our community's core values of inclusion, belonging, and respect for its residents. I addressed key issues, including infrastructure needs, the replacement of the Boone Bridge, and the current uncertainty of the economic environment due to recent actions or inactions at the state and federal levels. I also expressed concerns about unfunded mandates and their substantial impact on the city's budget. As I understand, there's over $1 million in unfunded mandates. It costs, it's a million dollars of the general fund in our budget to address some of the unfunded mandates that we plan on our planning department. I want to express my appreciation to Economic Development Manager Matt Lorenzen, who was instrumental in helping me prepare for these important forums. Our city is very lucky to have him. I met with Westland Mayor Rory Bayaski, I hope I'm pronouncing that right, I'm still learning that, where we discuss issues of common concern. We share a school district, and we have common concerns as cities with transportation issues, and I've been trying to lobby his support, along with other mayors, on making Boone Bridge a part of our priorities. I met with Clackamas County Commissioner Ben West, who formerly served on the Wilsonville City Council. We had discussions on how the county and the city can work together to help our most vulnerable, especially on the supportive housing initiative that the Clackamas County has done very good work in helping our community of most vulnerable in need. Then I had a critical meeting this past Friday with Congresswoman Andrea Salinas. It's a one-on-one meeting to discuss federal affairs, including the importance of continuing to fund a work to advance the crucial I-5 Boone Bridge seismic replacement project, and also an attempt to advocate for the restoration of over $500 million in canceled deliveries from the U.S. Department of Agriculture to food banks, which has impacted our local Wilsonville Community Sharing. The monthly meeting of the Clackamas County Coordinating Committee, where I attended that, we heard updates on county's supportive housing services. And my favorite part, and there are some people in this room that saw me and heard me and probably gave me some expletives, I joined the Wilsonville Seniors for lunch at the community center last week, discussed some tough duty, had some one-on-one conversations with very concerned members of the community at the center, and had the opportunity to be the caller for bingo after lunch. And when I left, I said that I feel running these meetings and listening to community comments during these meetings is a lot easier than trying to call bingo at the senior center. Well, I know that when Councilor Cunningham left, they already asked him back. I hear a rumor they may ask me back, but we'll have to see. But I had a great time. I was very happy to attend the Wilsonville Community Seniors, Inc. Bingo Night fundraiser this past Saturday night. The mission and purpose of the Wilsonville Community Seniors, Inc., which is also known by the acronym WCSI, is to make a positive contribution to the lives of senior citizens, the community of Wilsonville, and maintain positive relationships with other seniors in the community. A special thank you to Donna Atkinson and the WCSI board and staff for the fun night, and a local business owner, Jamie Beltran, who is just a great volunteer. He was the one that was calling the evening's games like a pro. I had, I'll take lessons from him. I'm still trying to decide what is easier, playing the modern game of bingo, which I don't know if you guys have played bingo lately, but it's not the little cards where you handwrite X's and circles, you know, it's a lot, it's a three-dimensional thing with a lot of different shapes and things, and I spent most of the time trying to figure out how to play. But anyway, I digress. Finally, as far as upcoming community events, on Saturday, April 19, starting at 10:00 a.m., the annual Wilsonville A-Con will be held on the ballfields in Memorial Park. That is something that my son valued every year. I encourage you to bring your children and grandchildren to that event. Over 18,000 candy and prize-filled eggs are mixed with prize coupons from local businesses and spread across the fields as children up to age 11 hunt for the perfect egg. And there's more information about events of the city that are available at the, excuse me, is available at the city's website. Last item to note is that the next city council meeting is scheduled for Monday, April 21, starting at 7:00 p.m. That was a lot to read. Thank you for your patience. Next, we turn to communications. We have a presentation scheduled for tonight by Director Erin Henkelman from the Safe Place Family Justice Center.
Good evening, everyone. I just wanted, as Rob Wurps, Chief of Police, here, I wanted to take a moment to introduce Erin Henkelman. She's an esteemed colleague. I'm a huge fan of her and the work she's doing at the Family Justice Center. I also think the information she's about to provide is, the timing's right, because we all know, last year, we saw a can of sugarcoated, a pretty violent end to the year, and a lot of that was related to domestic violence, and that's what she's going to talk about now, so I don't want to steal any more of her time. It's all yours, Erin.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chief.
Okay. Sorry. Just getting my presentation. Okay. It's the camera. Perfect. Thank you so much. I'm terrible with technology. Help? Good evening. Apologies about that. Thank you, Mayor O'Neill, and members of the commission for allowing me to talk with you tonight. I'm Erin Henkelman, Director for a Safe Place Family Justice Center and an employee of Clackamas County Sheriff's Office. Domestic violence is a pervasive, life-threatening crime that impacts our community at every level, from individual families to public health to the local economy. It affects millions of individuals across our nation, regardless of race, age, gender, economic status, religion, or education level. I'm here tonight to talk with you about Clackamas County's collective response to domestic and sexual violence in our community and share some information about a valuable resource. Domestic violence is a pattern of behaviors used by one partner to maintain power and control over another in an intimate relationship. This can be physical, emotional, sexual, economic, or spiritual, and can occur in different relationships. More than 16 million people suffer from intimate partner violence each year. Everyone deserves to have a healthy, loving, and respectful relationship, no matter what. Since 2013, a Safe Place Family Justice Center has provided individual support and advocacy to over 7,000 survivors accessing services for the first time. To date, we've had over 35,000 total visits for services, and about 22% of our survivors are referred by law enforcement and about 17% referred by a family or friend. Under One Roof, our mission is to improve the lives of survivors of domestic violence, sexual assault, human trafficking, and elder abuse through empowerment, coordinated service, and collaboration. Our goals are to increase legal and social services for families, empower and educate survivors, thus leading to the termination of abusive relationships. We hope to reduce the number of times, locations, and steps a survivor must take and go through to access services by providing trauma-informed wraparound services. In this, we support local law enforcement efforts to apprehend and prosecute offenders of domestic violence. As a center, we serve anyone experiencing domestic violence, sexual assault, stalking, human trafficking, or elder abuse. We support folks of any age, gender, or immigration status, and all of our services are free to the community. We always have the option for survivors to speak with a confidential advocate. What we hope survivors can expect when they access our building is that they can come in at a time that works for them, a moment when they have time to speak with someone, or they can get a ride to our center. We're a walk-in center and firmly believe in that. We provide a warm and welcoming space with individualized assistance and a place for kids to play. Just wanted to put a couple pictures up of the center, because I know it's nice to kind of have a visual, especially if you're talking with someone about accessing our building. Folks are quickly checked in by reception and then welcomed into our waiting room. We have a kitchen available with food resources that we encourage folks to have something to eat or drink while they're at the center, and then to take food items as needed with them. We also have individual meeting rooms where survivors meet with advocates, counselors, or even can have, file a police report with one of our detectives. The photo in the middle is also of our protection order video courtroom, where we do protection orders each day virtually. Our 11 partners are available as connection points for survivors and their children, regardless of where they are on their journey. This includes from crisis intervention services to long-term healing programming. Our advocates offer options and help survivors navigate and access the various services available, including help with a protective order, safety planning, filing a police report, referral for civil legal services, getting connected to a counselor, or attending a support group, as well as parenting support and programming for youth impacted by violence. We always offer the wide breadth of support and resources available, and by working together, we can provide that wraparound support. There's various ways to connect someone to services if you know someone or have someone in your community that may benefit from our services. It's always nice to be able to offer those different options. Sometimes it's looking at our website or our social media for folks to have a sense. We know it takes a lot to walk through our doors, and we encourage family members, supportive people in their lives, to come to the center with them, to provide a warm handoff, or to give us a call on their behalf to ask us questions. And then lastly, just ways to find us. We're located in Clackamas County on the county campus in Oregon City, and open Monday through Thursday, 8 to 4, and on Fridays, we close at 1:00. We also have two different partners that have 24-hour crisis lines that are available to support survivors after hours and on the weekends. And with that, I am all done with my presentation, and welcome any questions you all might have.
Do you have, like, different, like, business cards with different languages that provide to people that might need your services?
Absolutely. We have a language access plan at the center, so we provide language access to individuals in their primary language. If we don't have a staff person in the specific role that speaks the primary language of the survivor they're working with, we will always provide language access through in-person or phone interpretation, and sometimes we use video as well.
Do you have written materials in different languages?
Some of our materials are also in Spanish, and then some of our partner agencies have materials that are beyond English and Spanish and include other languages as well.
Thank you.
Yes.
I actually have a comment, and I may regret saying this, but very early in my life, before I met my husband, I was the victim of domestic violence from a person I was in a relationship with, to the point that I had to access services like this in South Dakota, and it saved my life. And the compassion of the staff that works in services like this, we never know how dangerous or how close someone is to being killed by a domestic partner or a boyfriend in my case, in situations like that, but they also provided housing for me temporarily while I was safe while they found him. Do you actually, in the wraparound services, work with the community on being able to provide temporary housing?
That's a great question, and thank you so much for sharing. Yes, Clackamas Women's Services is our largest community-based organization that works out of the center. They also have an emergency shelter and are the housing door for domestic violence survivors in the community. So they work closely with the county coordinated housing access program, and that's the one number you can call if you're in need of housing, and there is an option that if you are experiencing domestic violence, you get connected actually through the center and then connected with one of their advocates to go over the housing options.
I have a comment. Thank you for your very, very good work. I spent my career before I retired as a registered nurse and worked with many, many families in crisis. This goes back a long ways, and in the community in Southern Oregon that I worked, the most that we had at that time was, it was called Dunn House. It was a home where women in particular and their children could go, and it was a safe place, and that was really all we had. And then trying to make the connections between all the services, of course, so many of the services that we have now weren't in existence then. So I just want to thank you for your very, very good work, because it's so needed and a vital part of our community. Thank you.
And our Family Justice Center is part of a bigger national model, so there's about 150 family justice centers across the U.S. and about 150 internationally. And really, the thought behind it is that it's overwhelming when someone's thinking about leaving an unsafe situation or has just left, and so having to travel from place to place is overwhelming, especially if you have young kids in tow. And so the thought of, let's try to house as many partners we can in our community in one place, and also have the support of an advocate to help navigate those various systems, and make connections to services that people might otherwise not be aware of. I think sometimes we know that we can contact police, or we can contact or seek shelter, but there's many other resources and supports beyond, not only for adults, but youth impacted as well. So thank you.
I'd like to thank you for your presentation as well. The way you described this, this is a fantastic resource. When I was an officer, I wish we would have had a one-stop shop like this where we could connect people directly, right where they were at, with the resources that they really needed. I don't know if, I don't think it has happened, but I think it might be pertinent to have our local city government Facebook page put a post up about something like this and just kind of share with the community at large, just to make sure that this information's out there and people are aware of it, because a resource that you don't know about might as well just be a resource that doesn't exist. So thank you very much for all the work.
Thank you.
Mayor Carolyn, Councilor Berry also has a comment.
kids in tow. And so the thought of let's try to house as many partners we can in our community in one place and also have the support of an advocate to help navigate those various systems and make connections to services that people might otherwise not be aware of. I think sometimes we know that we can contact police or we can contact or seek shelter, but there's many other resources and supports beyond, not only for adults but youth impacted as well. So thank you.
I'd like to thank you for your presentation as well. The way you described this, this is a fantastic resource. When I was an officer, I wish we would have had a one-stop shop like this where we could connect people directly right where they were at with the resources that they really needed. I don't know if, I don't think it has happened, but I think it might be pertinent to have our local city government Facebook page put a post up about something like this and just kind of share with the community at large just to make sure that this information's out there and people are aware of it, because a resource that you don't know about might as well just be a resource that doesn't exist. So thank you very much for all the work.
Thank you.
Mayor Carolyn, Councilor Barry also has a comment.
Councilor Barry, City Council President Barry, excuse me.
Thank you for your presentation. I thought it was really good information to know. Can you tell us what the difference is between your organization and the Women's Services in Clackamas County? Like, if somebody's having a problem, where do they start?
That's a great question. Thank you. So the A Safe Place Family Justice Center always has a lead organization with every model. In our community, it's the Clackamas County Sheriff's Office, so I'm an employee of the Sheriff's Office. As director, I lead the operations, but I work very closely with all of our onsite partners, all 11 onsite partners. That includes Clackamas Women's Services and Safety Compass are both community-based organizations. We work very closely together, but they also have their own in-house resources and programming. The benefit is that if someone walks through our doors, we can help get them connected to an advocate and then talk about and assess what kind of support they're seeking and then connect them to the other partners. So 11 different organizations essentially all working under one roof and kind of navigating and maintaining confidentiality and all the things that come with that.
To kind of summarize what you just said, is somebody who lives within Clackamas County and they're having problems like domestic violence problems, then they connect with your organization first?
Absolutely. They can walk into the center, and we will talk with them about their situation and what supports we can offer. Yes, for sure.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Aaron, comments? Thank you very much for your presentation.
Yes, thank you for allowing me to come speak with you all. Have a good night.
We now have a presentation by Wilsonville Police Chief Wurps. He's going to talk about the state of the police department.
Mayor and Council, thanks. Good evening. I'm Robert Wurps, Chief of Police out here in Wilsonville. What I want to do today is just give a quick overview, mostly data-driven, over what we've seen over the last year, and I also have it over the last four years, so we have a little bit of comparison. I was planning to do this a couple weeks from now, but I saw that agenda was super-loaded, so I sped up and showed up tonight like kind of last minute, so if I hiccup a little bit here, forgive me. And then also, I can be a bit of a verbal juggernaut, so once I get going, feel free to cut me off if there's questions, is my point of that, because I, my dad was like, everything fast and on time, so I get going fast. So as most of us know, the Wilsonville Police is a contracted service from the Clackamas County Sheriff's Office. That gives us the small city with the big county resources. This is just a small list of the resources that we have access to at very quick notice. Professional accident reconstruction, behavioral health, which we now have our own, which is great, I'll touch on that, explosive devices, crisis negotiation SWAT, K-9 search and rescue, the Family Justice Center, as you just heard, forensic sketch artists and things of that nature. So all those come as part of the package, which is a really great service. This is just a quick chart of where we sit today. Our total staff is 23, and I want to be clear that this is, you can't really compare this to other like cities because the way we backstaff for vacation and sick and military leave, things of that nature, we can actually post overtime and get a temporary fill from the county, so don't have to upstaff for those leaves. So it makes us a little bit unique. But we have four officers on our first shift, which is traditionally called graveyard shift, second shift, which is our day shift as a sergeant, community service officer, three officers, two detectives, one motorcycle, one SRO, and those are all fully assigned to the city full-time. And same with all the rest of the shift, third shift, one sergeant, two officers, a traffic car, and a behavioral health clinician. And then our fourth shift, which runs from 4:00 p.m. to 2:00 a.m., is what we call our swing shift, also has a sergeant and three officers. So jumping right into the data, I'll start at the top right. And like I said, this information, this presentation, you can look at it more in detail online or in your packets, so I'll happy to answer questions later if you take a closer look. I'll start with the blue lines. What those blue lines are, those are the public-initiated calls. Those are calls that come to us typically via 911, either emergency or non-emergency, but they can also come from a walk-in to the lobby or things of that nature. So this is basically the demand. And as you look over, on the left is 2021, on the right's 2024, you can see that blue line starts to notch its way downward. That's a good trend, a favorable trend. It's not uncommon, actually, a lot of departments are seeing similar trends like that, but it's good to see here. Now, the orange line is what we call self-initiated activity. So this is a measurement of activities by the officers, so this is good for me because what we're seeing is with the free time, the lesser demand on the incoming calls, we see they're using that time productively to go out and do proactive things. And that's traffic stops, pedestrian stops, bicycles, checking parks, checking businesses, things of that nature, and our intent is to be seen, and hopefully that works as a deterrent to crime. Moving down to the chart below that, basically, these are our reported crimes. We report out to the Federal Bureau of Investigation annually, and they have three categories by which they measure, and we've kind of followed suit to that. So the orange one, which is the biggest one, that's property crimes. Property crimes are basically theft of a package, a break into a car, stolen bicycle, graffiti, I know is an issue. Those are the, those are property crimes, that's what the orange line is. You can see we kind of hit a, hit a big spike in 2022, and then you can see we had a pretty significant notching downward, again, favorable trend. Next category is the gray category or silver, that's societal crime. Societal crimes are crimes where there's not necessarily a person as a victim. These are crimes that the state's the victim. Examples are drug charges, illegal weapon charges, littering, things of that nature where there's not necessarily a person victim. What we've seen there is just kind of a bit of a roller coaster, a bit of an up and down, but overall, the numbers are pretty low. And then the last one in this particular chart is the person crimes. First, that's the blue line. Person crimes are physical assault, sexual assault, domestic violence, just like Erin was talking about earlier, those type of crimes. And as we can see, that one also kind of trends up and down, but has trended slightly upward coming into this last year. That's why I thought it was so timely to have Erin come present to us today. This is just a quick snapshot of call types, and this is probably just a fraction of it. There's, we go to so many different things. Our officers are very adept at handling a very multitude of things, huge multitude of things thrown at them at any time, anything of violations of no contact order, probation issues, sex offenders, loud noises, shots fired, mental health crisis, right? We do medical stuff too, so this is just my way of showing there's a lot going on all the time, and then our officers are doing a great job at addressing all those issues. So the next thing I wanted to do is crime rates. Rates are, rates are problematic sometimes because they can be easily affected by one or two small things, can have a huge effect on rates, but I still think it's important to look at to paint a picture. At the bottom of the screen, you'll kind of see the rate trending, and this is all calls, this particular crime rate. Rates are done by per thousand. The other thing I tried to do is throw some other areas in here, because if I could just show you a rate without any context, it doesn't really paint a picture. So what I've done is I've had, I have access to the in-lying and outlying calls of the county. Just to clarify, in-lying for the county, 82nd Avenue, McLaughlin, those type of things, and then obviously our outlying is more of the Colton, Estacada, South County, that type of thing. And then I've also included some of the other contract cities just so we get a reference of what we're looking at. So our overall rate has been dropping, and it dropped again this, this 2024, down to 35.8 overall, and you can kind of see how that compares to some of the other places. The next rate is the property crime. Okay, and this is back, like I said, this is your theft of property typically or damage to property. Again, this one, we've seen go up and then down, but it's also been favorably trending downward, down to 21.3 per thousand, which is really good for us. And you can see, in-lying county is 50, outlying's 10, so that's pretty low, which is good. And then you can kind of see how we line up to some of the other ones. Again, we're pretty low there too. Now, this is the person crime rate, again, per thousand. You can kind of see we've, we're up, we're down, we're up a little bit, and then coming into this, this last year where you're up another point. And like I said, we had a, we had a rough ending to last year. I can't sugarcoat that, but this is kind of how we line up to the rest of surrounding areas. So it's kind of doing its up and down here, trending upward unfortunately right now. And these are societal crimes, again, those crimes where there's not necessarily a person victim. We started really high in 2021, went down, came up in '23, and then came slightly down coming into '24. And again, you can kind of see how we stack up to some of the other areas. Again, not terrible, not doing too bad in this area either. What I did here was I tried, tried to reach out to similar-sized cities along the I-5 corridor. Unfortunately, I didn't get a lot of feedback, and then as I thought about it more, I didn't want to do any city shaming, so I, I, I want to be respectful, so I just kept those, the cities anonymous for what data I did get back. And so the one city that did get back to me, they measured their things similarly. Again, I had to put a disclaimer, these are somewhat gross estimations because people collect and process some of the data differently. But that, that, you can see, we fell pretty well, we're lower in categorically really overall, and then per subject. And then city two was wild because they just sent me a pile of unprocessed data. The best I could do with that was get an overall number because they broke things down differently, so I couldn't break it out to person, property, societal. So this one was just the overall rate was 113.1. The county's overall rate was 50.5 in hours. To put all that into perspective, it's 35.8, so that city's busy, very busy city. I want to talk also about behavioral health real quick, and this is the first time we've been able to collect data since this program's been in effect for about two years now. Man, I'm such a huge fan of this, it's been so good for the city and our community. So overall, the blue ring, that's the total number of calls she had over the last year was 561. The green line is the follow-up. This one's interesting to me because as we developed this program, it was initially kind of developed to be that crisis response to that, what I call the flash in the pan, that hot scenario where things are in crisis. But as time went on, we realized, Brenda realized she had time to follow up, and that's really where we're seeing a lot of value in this program. This is where we, the next day, a week later, two weeks later, she's following up to see how we're doing, how we're progressing, what other needs are there or not there, so this has been really good. She had 89 follow-ups to where the police were the first response, and then she helps to follow up to our response, and then 121 of those, like I call flash in the pan crisis response, so really good numbers there. We also had some demographics of what that looked like, so 20% of the folks she dealt with were currently houseless at that time, and then 27 were housed, and then 53% of the time, we weren't exactly sure what the status was or just wasn't reported out. The resolution stats, so how was this, how was this particular situation resolved? 74% of the time, it was in the community, which means it was kept locally here, this is good. 24% of the time, there was a referral to perhaps an emergency department or some other mental health crisis facility. And then what I like to see here is that only 2% of the time did a result in arrest, and I find that to be a very, very good number. That's really what we want here is to not be the solution of a mental health crisis, be the jail, which unfortunately is a place we've been stuck at in some situations. This is one of the big projects kind of coming to the end here. This was our big building upgrade for 2024. Thanks for everybody's support. My shout-out to DeLauren Martin, they really did a lot of heavy lifting on this one. Not to say there's not a lot of other people to thank, thank you to everybody who supported this, but it's really been a big boon to us for functionality and service to the public. We finally have a space, if someone comes in the lobby, we can take them away privately to share private information, things we didn't have before, so this has really been, for morale, for public service, huge thank you to everybody involved, particularly DeLauren Martin. And then closing out, there's my fancy slide drop. Closing out here, I took a lot of work, I'm glad you guys appreciate it. So community connection, as you all know me by now, is very important to me, so this is just kind of an overview of how we try to take every opportunity we can to connect with the public and, you know, show everybody we're not villains, we're not bad people, we're normal people too. We want good outcomes, so we're coffee with a cop, smart bike rodeos, national night outs, block parties, Cub Scouts, shop with the cops. So there's lots of things we try to participate in to keep that connection alive and well and keep us connected to the community. So there it is, it was fast, it was a lot I threw out there, so I want to leave some time for questions if anybody has any.
More of a comment than a question. I think the community engagement you do and your staff is stellar.
Thank you, sir.
I have watched, we went to the night out program over the summer, I did ride along with one of your officers in the late summer, and you have a following of young people that just come up and ask for the stickers.
Very proud.
And at a football game, you guys are, you're kind of like rock stars to them.
Our SRO is definitely that, yeah.
Yeah, something, something much different than in my generation, so appreciate all of those efforts.
Thank you, Mayor.
Your Honor, it looks like Council President Barry. Oh, sorry.
I guess I'm getting called. So thank you so much for that presentation. From the gist of it, I'm summarizing that you are taking the stance of community policing and building the relationship to work with people to help prevent future problems and bigger problems. And I'm really excited about the behavioral health specialists that we have, and I love it when you can highlight the student resource police officer, because I always hear really, really great things about both of those programs. So thank you for everything that the police department does for Wilsonville.
Yeah, thank you so much. Community policing is super important, we can't do it alone.
Chief, a couple questions for you. Can you give me an idea of the average tenure? Because they are, they, they actually asked to be assigned here in Wilsonville, correct? Out of the sheriff's office? What's the average tenure of their, their service here? Do you have any idea?
I can't, I'd have, I'd have to really look at it, but I can tell you anecdotally.
Spitball.
Yeah, thanks, happy to do that. What we have here, so that we do bidding every, for the city, it's a one-year minimum. We do bidding every six months, and that's done by seniority, and that seniority gives you access to days off and shift. But what we've seen here, like our day shift guys, Chris O'Connor for one, I think he's one of the, he is the most senior deputy at the sheriff's office, but he chooses to work out here because he likes the small city feel. Our other day shift guys are also been here now several years, they like the small community and like working out here. And then our third shift also, medium seniority folks, all been here. In fact, this last bump rotation was the first time ever, I think, that we didn't have anybody rotate out. So that was nice to see, so people are enjoying, because they can actually dive into a problem and see the outcome or the solution. Sometimes those things get lost when you're working at the county where things are happening really fast. So we have a big range of tenure, I guess is my answer. We have everybody from the 20-year guys all the way down to some brand-new folks, and we will see brand-new folks at night, but right now, it's ironic because even our night shift guy, one's a retired LAPD guy with 20 years-plus experience. Another, another deputy on night shift is a retired detective from another agency where he was a detective sergeant. So we've been very fortunate with a real high skill set.
And I think that's important to call out because even though we are, the services are provided by the Clackamas County Sheriff's Office, there is a preference by quite a few of these officers to stay here, which means that they're building relationships in the community and they're sticking around.
Sure.
So second question is, first I asked you to spitball, now I'm going to ask you to put on a, look in your crystal ball, and if you took a look at just within a community like Wilsonville, what is the greatest challenge that you see from, from the, for the department as far as what we should be looking for, for the future?
Yeah, that's come up, and I think I've discussed this with most all of you. I think protecting our elderly citizens, our vulnerable population's been a real challenge. We see some, continue to see a lot of fraud, we do a lot of public education around frauds and scams, but boy, they have gotten so creative and they keep them with AI. Like, I worry about how creative and how good they're getting at this stuff and how many people fall prey to that. So that's one of my concerns. I didn't make this word up, the silver tsunami. You know, we have a big aging population that's getting up there in years, and that comes with a lot of challenges, and I, and I worry about how prepared we are, not just from the police perspective, but globally from human services and all those things. So those are, those are some of the challenges, and then, you know, moving forward too, we're all, I know all of us are wringing our hands a little bit about budgets and things like that, but that's a trend we always see, worrying about budgets. But, but yeah, the theft or the, I'm sorry, the fraud, and that's one of the big ones, aging population.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Chief Wurps. I just want to comment that I had the opportunity to work with Brenda Evans last week, not wearing my counselor hat, but wearing a hat as a leader in my community where I live, and we, we do have a silver tsunami there. And we, we do have a Silver Tsunami there. And we do have one resident in particular that has some mental health concerns. You must be aware of him. I know your, your officers are. And we used her in a consulting fashion. How can we try to make him as safe as possible? And how can we make sure that our resident, our, our other residents can feel safe as well? And she just put us all, put us at ease. She had such wonderful ideas that we felt we could implement right away to, to support him, but to know also that your staff and Ms. Evans are available as well. So she's just such a, a strength to the, to the team and to the entire community. And I'm sure we'll see more of her, but she really gave us some great tools, just in a meeting with her for an hour, with our safety officer and myself and a few others. So thank you for having her on and supporting that.
Oh, she's wonderful. I'm a big fan, yep.
Chief, could you go back to the patrol measures slide?
I think I can.
Got to unflip that.
Yeah, I got to unflip my fancy stuff. Okay, which one were you looking for?
It was like the, about the third slider show, where it showed all the blue and orange bar graphs.
Gotcha.
So I just wanted to back you up on this. I've, I've had, I've had conversations with a lot of people in the community who have asked about, you know, should we get our own police department here? And, you know, there's, there's obviously, you know, an idea with that, that you have people who may stay tenured here longer and have longer lasting relationships with the community. But one of the things that, from the first time that I met with you, and I've seen this, this chart with different years on it, 2024, I think, was added in the last two. But the thing that I would point out on this chart is that if you go across and you add up the, the numbers of call activity initiated by method, you end up with about 13,000, 14,000 across the board. So that means that when the public is initiating a lot of calls, like in 2021, your officers are responding to those, and then when they have the time, they're going out and they're making their own work and they're staying busy. And then you slide over to 2024, and even though the call volume's gone down by about 2,500, they've picked up the slack in that work. They're not just sitting under a shade tree, they're going out and, and getting after it.
Yeah.
Making self-initiated stops and really being proactive and keeping our, our city safe. And that's really the biggest thing that, that's hit me when I've seen your presentations on this, is that they're really getting after it, getting to work and really working hard to keep our community safe. And so that's, that's, to me, the biggest number and one of the greatest things to see in this. I also just wanted to reinforce that at our council goals meeting that you were at, you know, I, I pushed and, and I think council really stepped up and supported it. We're really looking to support our officers through cleaning up our code enforcement so that you guys have the tools you need. When you see a problem, you can go fix a problem. Also, we talked about a commitment to looking at making sure that we have as much behavioral health support on the ground as we can give you. And we'll be looking at what we can do with that, I think, coming up. And then I also just wanted, you know, kind of back on my first point, I've seen personally how responsive our, our officers have been to the needs of the community. I was at one of the football games this season where it went a little haywire, and it shook people up a little bit. And then I was back at another game shortly thereafter, and the presence of our police officers was noticeable. It put people at ease. People were really happy to see that the concerns were met, and they were met with a really effective, visible response. So I, when people ask me, do we need to change up our police department here in Wilsonville? My answer is no. I'm really happy with what we have.
Thank you, sir.
I would just only add that being here for 17 years, the vast difference of what law enforcement was 17 years ago versus today is dramatic. I mean, you guys are stellar, so I really appreciate it.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thanks, Chief.
Thank you all.
Okay, so we now move to community input announcements portion of the city council meeting agenda. This is an opportunity for visitors to address the city council any matter concerning cities' business or any matter over which the council has control. It also the time to address items not on the agenda. It is also the time to address items that are on the agenda but not scheduled for public hearing. Staff will make every effort to respond to questions raised during council input as quickly as possible following the council meeting. Please limit your comments to three minutes. To comment before council in person or virtually, you must sign up either by completing a speaker card at the side of the room or by using the raise hand feature in Zoom. You will need to provide your name, address, and topic you will be discussing. Information on engaging with city council can be found on the city council's website As a reminder, when you begin your comments, state your name for the record and state your address, or state that your address is provided on your speaker card. Please note that this is not the only way to communicate with the council or me. You're welcome to submit information in writing or via email. Additionally, I encourage you to schedule a meeting with me or any of the other counselors to discuss your concerns further. With that, I will call Laura Sislak. Hope I pronounced the last name correct.
Hi, good to meet you.
Yes, whatever's comfortable for you.
Hi there, Mayor and councilors. My name is Laura Sislak, and I'm with the Children's Center in Clackamas County, and I'm here with regard to your proclamation for Child Abuse Prevention Month. And just wanted to thank you for recognizing Prevention and Awareness Month and tell you very briefly about the Children's Center, invite you to come see us for a tour, participate in some of our really great events this month in honor of Prevention and Awareness Month. So the Children's Center is a private nonprofit. We're located in Oregon City. We serve all of Clackamas County. We work very closely with local law enforcement and child welfare, Safe Place, all the partners in the community that join together to support children and families when there are concerns of abuse and neglect. Our organization is the medical, designated medical provider that does assessments when there's a concern of abuse. Families and children come to our site, and children have a medical and forensic assessment to determine what's happened in their case, and we provide family support and, and therapy services for those families that are seen. Last year, we served about 500 children over the course of the year with those assessment services, provided over 1,200 therapy visits, and we have a growing prevention program, which is what I'm here talking about today. So just wanted to thank you for that recognition. We would love to have you out to come see our services, tour our facility. In a lot of ways, we have similar approach to a Safe Place and that really the intention is to have a trauma-informed place where all the folks who are involved in the case of prosecuting child abuse and neglect come. The child has to only tell their story once. It's a much more trauma-informed way to support that child and family. So we're doing really critical work and trying to share this message that prevention of abuse and neglect is possible. It takes the whole community to be committed to that. And we're really here to encourage folks to prioritize child safety and well-being, and that prevention looks like everything from awareness of the signs of abuse and neglect, mandatory reporting, to really focusing in on positive childhood experiences and providing the kinds of family supports and positive childhood experiences that create resilience in our community. So thank you again. I have some flyers back here for some of the events we have this month throughout Clackamas County. Have a little swag for Child Abuse Prevention Month, so I'll leave it over here. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Doris Whaler.
Doris Whaler, I live in West Frog Pond. My information's on record. So I want to congratulate the Arts Culture and Heritage Commission and the city for their Hearts of Wilsonville project. This public art celebrates many cultures and was funded by the Wilsonville Metro Community Enhancement Grant, which I was really appreciative of. So the 10 four-and-a-half foot by four-and-a-half foot hearts have been decorated by local artists, including some of the students from Wilsonville High School. All 10 hearts will be on display April 30th at the Stein Bouzier Barn from 5:00 to 7:00 PM, so please come and see them. Or alternately, you can search Hearts of Wilsonville map on the website, and it will give you a map of where all the locations are. So I have two other items. Those few days of sunshine that we had, plantings were made by our contractor who's doing the Beckman Road upgrade. And so that was on East, East, or East Beckman Road. And so it gives me hope that we may actually have the bridge open sometime soon. Is there a projection, Brian?
Wow. Yes, there is.
Can we know it?
Yeah, I, I, what I have heard, and please don't.
Quote you?
Yeah, I'm not going to die on the hill on this one, but I think mid-May is what I'm hearing.
That's wonderful. Okay, then I have one other question. This is probably for you too, Brian. Several council meetings ago, you told us that the theater, the new owners of the theater property had offered a lease to the city. So I'd like to know if, what's happened on that? And did it include the parking lot? And are we doing anything?
Well, we, we toured the facility with the new owners. We've had two internal meetings, and I've, I've had outreach with some external third parties that run community theaters and performing arts centers, but nothing new to update other than the information that I just provided. There's some challenges with the theater in terms of tenant improvements to make it a true performing arts center. So we're working through some of those, and we're still having discussions with the property owners.
Well, that's very good news. Thank you.
Yep.
Mary Rooney.
Hello, my name is Mary Rooney, and my address is on the speaker card. Thank you, Mayor and councilors, for this opportunity to speak. I'm a resident of the Park at Maryfield neighborhood, and a few months ago, I spoke at a city council meeting about the concerns that neighbors and I have about wildfire risk related to our proximity to the city-managed Park at Maryfield and the metro-managed Graham Oaks Park. As far as the Park at Maryfield wetlands and forested area, the city of Wilsonville has since contracted with a natural resource management firm to remove the invasive vegetation and reduce the fire load. Things are looking so much better in the park with regard to debris and plant overgrowth. Thank you for listening to our concerns and taking action. On the Graham Oaks side, last Wednesday, Metro Councillor Garrett Rosenthal met with a few of us residents to walk through the area of Graham Oaks Park where it abuts to the residential property lines. One of the Park at Maryfield residents is a wildfire investigator, and he was able to speak in depth as to the actual fire risk posed by the overplanting and ice storm debris. Also present for this walkthrough was Mayor O'Neill, Councillor Cunningham, Assistant City Manager Gina Troha, and Parks and Rec Director Chris Amerman. Thank you all for being there. It was so meaningful to me and other residents to feel like our city has our support and we're willing to take part in the discussion on fire safety. I plan to follow up with Councillor Rosenhall, Rosenthal in the next week to inquire if any plans have been made to address the fuel load and other concerns that were raised during the walkthrough, such as overplanting of oak trees and other species. Moving forward, the topic of wildfire safety will need to be an ongoing conversation and plan for action to help reduce the risk to our homes and communities. Our summers are only getting hotter and drier, and this risk is not going away. Some of the residents have moved here to Wilsonville from areas where the risk for fire was so great that monthly fire insurance was as much as a mortgage. This is something else to consider with regard to the livability of our town. Additionally, we need to have community buy-in and education on the risks posed by fireworks this summer, especially adjacent to Graham Oaks and other parks. My understanding is that fireworks are banned, but this isn't enforced very well. One small spark from a misguided 4th of July fire could set the whole park ablaze. During the metro walkthrough, someone suggested imagining the scene if Villaboy and other neighborhoods were to have to evacuate on short notice. We can plan ahead to mitigate this risk. Thank you again to Mayor O'Neill and Councillor Cunningham for being present for the metro park walkthrough with Councillor Rosenthal. Your willingness to show up for your constituents was noted, and your contributions to the conversation were important. Thank you.
Is your address on the file, sir?
Oh, yeah, sorry. Yeah, my address is on file. I live in, on Canyon Creek Road on the east side of the highway. I'm talking today, I want to talk today about the town center and the pedestrian bike bridge that we, was discussed quite a bit during the election and, but it seems since the election and the things that have gone on in Washington, it seems to have dropped out of the, the visibility, and I want to make sure it stays there. And I understand that there's going to be limitations that we don't, that it's going to be difficult to fund a lot of these things. And I understand that unfunded mandates are an issue. But I want to keep this alive because I think the town wants it. I think it'll be a very useful addition to the town. We talked about the theater and having the bike bridge coming across there would be a wonderful way on a summer afternoon to come and watch theater and ride across there. Town center, I think that's, I'm for the town center because I think it's going to improve the cachet of this city. It's going to improve the status of this city. I think that, you know, we want to be, I want this city, and I think everybody does, to be an outstanding, the jewel of the metropolitan area of Portland, where people talk about how, wow, they're really thinking ahead. It's going to be difficult to do that in the next couple of years with the way things are in, in Washington. But for us to do this, I think it would be kind of almost an act of defiance of, to basically stand up and say, you know, we're, we're going to, we're, we're going to not give up on our dreams because, you know, we've got a, you know, some giant financial issues. It's not all about finance. It's about, it's about first steadying a, putting a stake in the ground, and that's your job. And I think that, you know, the way you can do this is to create an urban renewal district as soon as you can for the town center, to do things, maybe something like a call for, look at, make, make this pedestrian bridge into something, an architectural monument that people can talk about so they can see this. And I think it's going to add to the, the kind of town that we're going to be. It's going to make us more upscale, which is what I want. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name's Rick Wallace. My address is on the speaker card. I want to thank the city council and city staff and Wilsonville Police Department for how walkable and bikable Wilsonville is. I'm fortunate enough to live and work in Wilsonville. I live over by the high school, and I work on town center loop, so I really have no excuse not to walk or bike to work. According to the Wilsonville Chamber of Commerce, the Wilsonville area is home to some of the finest cycling routes in the South Metro region. Exploring the landscape and, and around Wilsonville by bicycle will definitely yield hours of rewarding activity. I agree with the chamber. I agree with the chamber and have probably utilized most, if not all, of those rewarding cycling routes and highly recommend them to anyone who will listen. The city of Wilsonville also has a fantastic bike and walk map, which I highly recommend to everyone to check out on their website. Wilsonville has a growing walking and cycling community. In the 2024 community survey, 289 people, or 70% of respondents, said yes when asked if they walked or biked instead of driving in the last 12 months. That's higher than most other communities surveyed, the 77th percentile of 317 communities surveyed. We still have room to grow, however. Just this weekend, a boy was hit by a car while biking in Wilsonville near Sonic. Luckily, he was okay, and several members of the community stopped to help him. But this sort of thing happens when drivers are focused on getting to their destination in the shortest amount of time or are distracted by their phones. I myself was struck by a car last year on 95th when a driver turned onto Ritter Road right in front of me while I was biking straight through the intersection. He said he didn't see me even though it was broad daylight. Don't get me wrong, I have a car. I drive all the time, and I hate traffic as much as the next person. But for the sake of my health, stress, and enjoyment, I much prefer to bike. When biking, I can literally wave goodbye to the traffic as I pass on by. Biking from the high school to Villalbois only takes four minutes more than driving, and that's when there isn't any traffic at all. Just the other day, I had someone play rock-paper-scissors with me at a stoplight. I can ring my bell and wave at people I know, and I have even, on occasion, picked up a large piece of garbage like Starbucks or McDonald's cups while biking, which isn't so easy to do when driving. So again, I want to thank the city for all that it has done so far to make this town so walkable and bikeable. And I hope we stay on the right track and keep making it safer to choose alternatives to driving.
Susan Reap.
Hello, I'm Susan Reap, and my address is on record. I hadn't intended to comment, but Mary mentioned fire and fireworks. And I didn't know that fireworks were not allowed or were illegal in Wilsonville. If that's the case, in Villalbois, for the five years I've lived here, every 4th of July, I have bottle rockets going on over my house and sparks landing on the roof next door. And I'm always, up until about midnight, looking out my window, hoping they're not landing on my roof. And I live across the street from Graham Oaks. So it is a very real problem, and especially when things are very dry. And if the council is ever, is taking this up as an issue, that might be something to be aware of because it could be a very serious problem. And that's all I have to say.
Say, Mayor, is, are they illegal?
Bottle rockets are not legal. No. Anything that flies is not legal.
That's what I thought.
Unless you cross over the Columbia River, then everything's fair game.
Right. No one on Zoom? Okay. Thank you, everyone. The next item is our consent agenda. Will the city attorney please read the items?
I think you have councillor comments.
Oh, goodness gracious. I apologize to my councilors. I'm tired tonight. Councillor Comments. Council President Barry, do you have any comments? Oh, she isn't. Okay. Councillor Dunwell.
Yes, I'll keep it brief. I would like to talk a little bit about the event that I attended on last Thursday night for the Arts, Culture and Heritage Commission. It was multicultural dances, international dances, and it was at McMinimans. This is their first time that they've taken a step to go out and really kind of bring something back to the community like this. It was an activity. And I'm hopeful that we will see it grow and be at other city events outdoors where we can have a larger crowd and really share some of the culture that lives in this community. And the groups that played, there were three, there were four presentations. Two were from Japanese groups. One was a Japanese, traditional Japanese dance. And then there was a lion dance. And then also a classical dance from India. And then an indigenous Aztec dance. And I wish I had photos to share because it was, it was very tribal. I may have whooped a few times and gotten a little, little loud during it. But I do believe that that's part of our future, and I think that's part of the great value that this group can bring. I did have a conversation with Erica Valentine during the event, and we're, the commission is always looking for ideas from the citizens and from all of us on how we can really bring additional value into the arts, culture, and heritage side of our business. I think that there's a lot that we can do beyond where we're going. One of the things, obviously, that I would recommend is that next year, they bring in a circle drum group from one of the indigenous tribes here in Oregon. And so let me do a real quick shameless plug really quick. So at the Chamaua School in Kaiser Week from Saturday is a, the first, one of their first powwows of the season. So we're coming up on powwow season. So if you want to talk about the culture that happens within our state from our indigenous tribes, I'll be there. They have grand entrances. You can look it up. And it is part of who we are and where we all come from. I would really recommend everybody at the city at least consider attending. So thank you.
Councillor Cunningham.
Thank you, Mayor. It's actually been a quiet few weeks for meetings. I've met with several citizens and different people with different interests. But the highlight was definitely the walk out there at Graham Oaks with, and I'd like to thank Mary for inviting me out there to be a part of that. I think, you know, something like that is one of the most important things that your government, in my opinion, should be looking out for is your safety, your public safety, your ability to live in a safe community. And if you ever, if you're, if you're, if you are ever out there and you walk kind of towards the, I guess it would be the southeast side of the park, where you cross over to the daffodils, you'll know exactly where city maintenance ends and metro lack of maintenance begins. It is a stark contrast. And it's not something that I've ever been trained to look for. I've walked through there a few times, and I didn't blink an eye. But when it's pointed out, it is, it's incredible. And even today, I was going down to Memorial Park to put some equipment and some fuel boxes down there. And I just kind of looked around at the, as you're taking that winding road down the hill into Memorial Park, and just how well-maintained our parks are and just how incredible, what an incredible job they do with those. So, yeah, on multiple levels, it was a great experience to really recognize, one, the real issue that is facing our citizens and our neighborhoods over there, and two, just to really take a minute to recognize and appreciate what we have in the city and how, how well we do the work that we do here. And not even we, I shouldn't even say we, how well our parks people are out there just kicking butt every day. But that's it. I'll keep it brief. Thank you.
Councillor Shavon.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. If I could just grab the floor back for one second. I did want to make one last comment. And that was when we were out there, I'd like to thank Mayor O'Neill for really advocating for our city and our citizens out there. He very firmly, in no uncertain terms, told Metro that he expected that this was a priority. And I'd just like to point that out. And thank you for that because there was few people there, and I'd like to say it publicly.
Councillor Shavon.
Thank you, Mayor. It was a busy couple of weeks for me, but I will submit a summary to our city recorder for the record. I'll just try and hit the highlights. I continue to meet with citizens from all walks and all areas of the city to listen to their ideas and their questions and their concerns. And the theme throughout each one of the meetings has been, the person will ask me, what can they do to help bring our city together? What sort of effort can they take to bring all the different ideas, opposing ideas? What can we do? And I have said, let's work together when we have meetings, get people there, have people come with open minds, but also with good ideas. We're all here to listen and to learn from one another. So I will continue to meet with our citizens. I've got another meeting, coffee meeting coming up this week. We're going to try out the new Elka Bee Coffee House over by the Safeway, so looking forward to that. On March 20th, I attended the French Prairie Road Pathway Project. This is for Charbonneau. Just to bring everybody up to speed on that, Charbonneau was built in the 1970s when there were no codes for sidewalks and walking paths. So we have just a portion of a walking path, but not completely throughout our community. We had 180 attendees. That's a pretty good number of people. I want to thank Mr. Cosgrove and his city staff, engineers, and others that conducted the meeting, and also Wallace Consulting. They did an excellent job. We had breakout sessions. We listened. We got lots of ideas. That was the primary reason for the meeting, was to listen and learn from one another. And then all of that information has been taken back to the city and to the consulting company, and there'll be next steps, I'm sure. But it was a great meeting, and I have heard from other members of my community how much they appreciate the way that it was done. On March 30th, I met with State Representative Courtney Neron, and we talked about legislative issues. As Mayor pointed out, this is just a record number of bills and work that's going on down in Salem right now. Representative Neron and I talked about, of course, the Boone Bridge and continual ways that she can help us try to get our message across about the bridge. Probably the highlight of, and they were all highlight meetings, so don't take that the wrong way. But one that really excited me was, I was asked to have coffee with a member of the Wilsonville Rotary. Mr. Jake McMichael is a Wilsonville resident, also past president of the Wilsonville Rotary. And he and his wife, actually, were first citizens a few years back. Mr. McMichael asked me to consider the opportunity for the city of Wilsonville to become an international city of peace. Now, this is an organization that the Rotary works with to, and with individual cities to achieve that special designation. The mission of the International Cities of Peace are many, but just a few highlights are to welcome all people and to respect one another, but also to really work on safety and prosperity as a city. So I feel that those are key attributes that every one of us would want to live in. And when we listen to issues tonight about safety and family safety and child welfare and child safety, that is something that I believe a city of peace would want to work very hard on. There are only two other cities in the state that are recognized as international cities of peace, and that is Ashland and Eugene. I certainly would like Wilsonville to be one of those. I think we certainly could work on that and qualify for that. Now, I did hear that Newburgh was also working on it, but that's where my competitive edge shows up a little bit, and I like to be the first one up here in this region. And then there's also a possibility with our sister city in Japan, Kirikata, that we might be able to work with Rotary International to have them become a city of peace as well. So I believe our next step is for Mr. McMichael and another member of Rotary to meet with Mr. Cosgrove. And if there's some interest there, maybe they can make a presentation at the council. And that's all I have for tonight. Thank you.
I think for my thoughts, that's a great idea.
Mayor, Councillor Barry has returned.
Oh. City Council President Barry, do you have any comments or a report?
Yeah, thank you. I lost connection for a few minutes.
No problem.
So I did my usual committee attendance this month, including the Housing Our Future Task Force and the C4 Metro Subcommittee and the Tourism Promotion Strategic Plan Committee. But one of the highlights was being able to sit in for the mayor, who was out of town on Tuesday, March 25th, with the Clackamas County, other cities nearby. The county's working on their strategic plan for the next two to five years. And so they're meeting, they're having a lot of the stakeholders and agencies and cities get together and work with a consultant to come up with the key ideas that we think would be really important for the Clackamas County to address. And so attending the meeting on March 25th with me was Mayor Buck from Lake Oswego, Mayor Milch from Gladstone, Denise McGriff from Oregon City, and then also Councillor Massey for Milwaukee, and then myself for Wilsonville. So we were looking at, you know, what are the key issues for the next five years? And we all pretty much agreed that appropriate seating for housing is important, improving public transit, working on county road fund assistance from the county, and ongoing support for behavior, health, and homeless issues. And so I'm looking forward to hearing what the county can say with their strategic plan. And that summarizes my report.
Thank you.
We hope you feel better soon.
Definitely. The next item in our consent is our consent agenda. Will the city attorney please read the items on consent?
Resolution number 3194, a resolution of the city of Wilsonville adopting the FY 2025-26 Five-Year Action Plan and Annual One-Year Implementation Plan for the Wilsonville Tourism Development Strategy. Resolution number 3195, a resolution of the city of Wilsonville adopting the Tourism Development Strategy April 2025 and minutes of the March 17, 2025 city council meeting.
Councillor Dunwell, can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Mayor, I make a motion to approve the consent agenda as read.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion to approve the following order of agenda has been made. And second, is there any discussion? Then we'll call a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion passes 5-0.
I just want to take the opportunity to say thank you to all the community members that participate in our local democracy by serving on boards and commissions. We'll be honoring them, as you noted, on May 1st. But local government doesn't work without people that care. So I want to just thank them on behalf of all the staff that get to work with them.
I will note that you're directly responsible for that because the Civics Academy started many years ago when, I remember, I applied at a time where you couldn't get any applications for volunteers. So, and that was your idea. And thank you for bringing that to our city. Okay, anything else? Is it good to the order?
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
Okay. Unless anybody has any objections, I adjourn the city council meeting of April 7th, 2025 at 8:31 p.m.